We have now moved for the candidates running for Council District 5. We have with us this morning, this afternoon I should say, Victor Gordo, Aida Morales, and Crystal Lopez Padlee. Thank you so much for being here. We have a list of questions for you to go through, but first we want to let you start, each of you. One minute, tell us about who you are and why you're here today, and why you're running for office. Who would like to start?
I can start.
Go for it. Oh, I'm sorry. And just make sure everyone's got their cellphones off, because they interfere with the wireless. Okay.
Hi, everyone. My name is Crystal Lopez Padlee. I'm running for City Council here in District 5, along with Aida and Victor. And I'm running because I'm a young mom. I live on El Molino, on the other side of the freeway. We have in Pasadena, it's no secret that it's very much a tale of two cities. Within our district, we're mostly immigrant population. We have a high minority population. We have populations that are not receiving representation from City Hall. As a young mother, I have felt very much neglected by our council member, by our council in general. I know there are parts of our district, the wealthier areas, that do receive attention. And as somebody that has experienced shootings on my own street, as somebody that has experienced car accidents right in front of my own home, as somebody that has experienced, you know, my gosh, if I want to take my children to the parks, I have to take them outside of our district. I think it's time for change. I think it's time for a new generation of Latinos to speak truth to the powers that be. And so I'm here running. I'm not doing this out of vanity, out of a placeholder for any higher office. I'm doing this because there's a need. Thank you.
My name is Aida Morales. And I am running because I would like to see some changes in the city. I want to see the youth more involved and in having better programs. I would like to see better environment in Pasadena. And I would like to see more affordable housing.
Good afternoon, everyone. Como están? I'm Victor Gordo, and I'm the incumbent. I'm not sure how Ms. Padlee says she's been neglected when she's only lived here for about a year. It's important that we have people at City Council that understand our community. I went to elementary school in Pasadena, in District 5. And I've lived here well over 42 years. So I know the district, I know the people, and I care deeply about this city and this community. I did not grow up in Orange County, as others have. I grew right here. And that's why I'm running. Thank you.
So we have a series of questions for you. Each question, you are allotted up to 90 seconds, so a minute and a half. And you can see down there, they've got little signs to let you know we've got 15 seconds left, or when you need to wrap things up. We're going to bounce around as to who goes first on this one. So we'll start with Mr. Gordo on this question. What are some concerns? I'm going to ask the question once, so if you guys want to take notes to remind yourselves of what the question is about. What are some concerns expressed by Latino constituents in your district? How did you learn about them? What would you be able to do as an elected official that you can't do as a community member to address those issues?
You know, that's an interesting question. And it's interesting because, you know, my entire time on the City Council, people have always said, "Well, what are the Latino issues?" And I say, "They're the same issues as everyone else's issues." As Latinos, we care about clean streets, safe streets. We want housing that's affordable. We want a police department that's responsive. And we want education for our families and our neighbors. And we want access to good paying jobs. And my record on the City Council is pretty extensive and very clear. I've cleaned up neighborhoods, shut down liquor stores, helped bring affordable housing to the district. I've helped create jobs. I've worked as a representative of District 5 and a representative of the entire City Council to ensure that the Rose Bowl was renovated and continues to be a tremendous icon, and provide jobs, and be the economic engine that it was intended to be. And not all of us up here can claim a record of involvement in Pasadena, let alone a record of achievement in Pasadena. And so Latinos care about the same things that everyone else does. And I'm proud to be the voice of this community at the City Council, and have been there for some time, providing that voice, advocating for education, advocating for jobs, and advocating for housing.
Ms. Morales.
As Latinos, we have specific problems and issues. And beginning with the language, we have a lot of immigrants that don't speak English. And so we need to have everything translated for the community. Housing, a lot of them have left because there is not enough affordable housing, because our community is lower income. And also, I would like to see more, I would like to see students graduating with an specific training, so that these students who won't be able to afford a university can have an area of work where they can support themselves. And that probably will give them a better self-image. It will give them better opportunities. And they will be able to stay focused and don't get into gangs or drugs, because they grow hopeless. I want to see them to grow with hope and to, that they can know that when they graduate, they're going to have something specific that they can work on.
I agree that the Latino issues are very similar to everybody's issues. However, I feel like they are exacerbated, some of these issues are exacerbated within our own district. I think that there is an issue of public safety, that there is tension between law enforcement and the community. I've spoken to hundreds and hundreds of residents. They do not agree with the idea that we need to increase police, which is something that is frequently cited by our councilmen. They do not agree that more police is going to be a resolution to the gangs. We're not the first city to have gangs. Every other city that's dealt with gangs, similar to our district, has dealt with them through mentorship programs, through job skills training, through a focus on the youth so that we stop the violence before it gets to the point of law enforcement. There needs to be a focus in organizing our community. Most of our community does not belong to any kind of neighborhood association, does not have any kind of neighborhood watch. We need, so if I'm, as a young Latina, if I don't want to call the police, I don't want them knocking on my door, we also have a high immigrant, you know, high undocumented population, a black population, minorities. If I don't want the police knocking on my door, for whatever reason, I have to be able to call a neighbor who will then have the police, be able to call the police. Whatever it is, we have to work at the grassroots level to organize our communities. This issue of affordable housing, thank goodness, this is, this issue of affordable housing, I think it especially affects Latinos, people that are recently arrived. There's a certain nativism in Pasadena that I feel is very dangerous, this idea that you have to live here 40, 50 years before you can have a voice. This is something that immigrants experience every day, that my parents experience, that my grandfather, as a bracero, experienced. And this nativism needs to stop. If you are living in this city, you should have a voice at the table.
We'll let you start us off on the next one. This question, how do you think the city should approach the current deficit? Should all programs take an equal hit? How will you balance prioritizing programs to protect more important ones? And what might those programs be? You can begin this one.
You know, frequently, we hear this phrase that cities need to learn to do more with less. It's frustrating, because coming from a district that is composed mostly of renters, mostly working-class communities, when the city is looking to cut budgets, the first place that it cuts is in the working-class neighborhoods. I've gone through streets, talking to neighbors where the streets are complete disrepair. As a woman, after dark, I don't want to be out in some parts of our district simply because there are no lights that are working on the street. I'm frustrated with city services. However, when it comes to programs being cut, I'm looking at this, our residents are a huge resource. There are people willing to volunteer services. We look at this farmer's market that's happening here. We have a farmer's market in Villa Park that's just a tiny percentage of what happens here that doesn't attract residents from around the city. However, there are people that I've spoken to that are nutritionists, that want to volunteer their time, that want to help cook meals for the homeless population. There needs to be more promotion at a social level. When, you know, as a councilperson, you're not just making decisions in City Hall. You're also, you also have a platform to promote social campaigns in order to bring more activism within your community. So yes, we can learn to do more with less. However, we need to hold the city accountable for the very basic things that we need on our streets.
Mr. Gordo.
So I think the question was about the budget. We have a $758 million budget in the state of Pasadena. $237 million of that is in the general fund where we actually can move dollars around. And it's not true that we cut programs for working-class people. In fact, we protected programs for working-class people. The issue of the budget's going to be an important one. And that's why we need someone who's experienced in the budget, and experienced in balancing the budget. Even in the worst time of the recession, Pasadena had a balanced budget because we had a healthy reserve. At the time, our reserve policy was about 12%. Now, we're at 20% reserve policy. We have, we're up to about 15%. We are expecting a tough time in the next couple of years, to the tune of about $3 million, just over $3 million. But we've already started making some adjustments, about $2.3 million worth of adjustments the council took last year by removing positions that weren't filled from the city's budget. And we'll continue to do that. And so you will not see cuts to important services, and certainly not to services to people in their neighborhood. What you will see is us adjusting the budget as people leave city employment. We'll be sure to adjust the budget at that time. We also protected the Health Department. Some of you recall when we lost funding from the federal government, we took actions to move those services at the Health Department, from the Health Department to a private nonprofit who could provide the services for us.
I don't believe it's about experience, because when Victor came into office, he didn't have any experience, as far as the city council. I think it's about caring. If we care, we put the money where it should be. And it should be with the youth, with the community, with trying to develop programs that are going to help us to have a better city. There is many streets in Pasadena that are so dirty. That I, one day, I was coming out from a hotel here in Walnut and Fair Oaks, and these two English tourists were ahead of me. And when we passed by the corner of Holly and Fair Oaks, you really think, you know, and I was sombered because they were talking about it. And they went around, and they were covering their, and I thought, "This is Pasadena. Why should we have streets like that?" And that's not the only corner. So there is many things that we have to do. And I think that it's how you use the money. It's about how you use it. It's not about how much money you have. And so I just think that the city council hasn't taught it totally. So I would like to be there to help.
Okay, this next question, we'll start with Ms. Morales. Diversity and inclusion are topics that are often discussed here in Pasadena. In brief, what should the city do to better encourage Latino residents to be more civically engaged?
I remember when I was district bilingual advisor, council chairperson for the Pasadena Unified School District. When I came, many parents then came to the meetings. And people used to say, "Oh, they don't care. They don't care, beating me because they are not educated. They don't care." And that wasn't true. You know, when I start calling them, and they start coming, and we have full memberships coming to the meetings. So it's a matter of expectation. The same at the schools. If you expect a lot from that child, that child is going to perform. The same thing is for the citizens. If you expect from them, they're going to come. If they know you care, because if you're going to go to a meeting where they don't care, they're not going to want to be there. But if they know the city cares for them, they're going to be there.
This idea of mentorship is huge. It has to exist. We have, you know, even on this campaign, I am trying to engage people at the door, where they're at, because you're here at this meeting. You're already activated. But most people are behind their doors. They haven't been activated, especially the children of people who are undocumented. I'm hitting doors, meeting 18, 21-year-olds who want to know, "How do I get involved? How do I get involved?" Their parents aren't documented, but they want to be involved and be part of the process to make a difference. We have somebody, he claims to speak for the Latinos. Nobody should claim to speak for the Latinos. The community speaks for itself. As a Latino, he's been in office, he's the only Latino that's been in office for decades and decades. It's time for him to mentor somebody. What's the succession plan? Is it just to stand in this position for the rest of your life? Or is it to actually engage the Latino community to make a difference, so that they feel like they can enter the public sphere and not have this wall put up against them?
All righty. So it goes, it does go back to involving young people. I think it starts at a young age. You know, when I was involved at a very young age in Pasadena, beginning with the Summer Youth Employment Program when I was 18 years old, it piqued my interest in public service. When I worked at Day One, providing alternative activities for youth and engaging young people, including young people in the Latino community, to provide activities for kids throughout Pasadena, they got interested in civic involvement. When I worked to mentor kids at the Pasadena Youth Council and the YMCA, those kids too get interested. And so I think it's very important to be involved, to understand what's happened and what's happening in this city, and to be not just an advocate, but someone who involves young people. You know, I'm looking at Robin Salzer and his Lemonade Brigade that attracted young people into the city of Pasadena. So I think it starts at a young age, involving young people. I think it's direct outreach to the community. Vecinos Unidos in my neighborhood involves young people in civic engagement. So we do have a responsibility to start young kids at a young age in business and in civic involvement.
We started with you, right? Okay. The next question, we'll start with you again. The new administration talking about repealing the Affordable Care Act and defunding crucial health providers like Pan Parenthood and CHAP Care, leaving many without access to affordable health care. Describe how you would balance community concerns, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to protect those who will be affected by these policy changes.
I think we need to protect all our FQHC clinics, especially, we have clinics that are working on the ground throughout Pasadena. Services are being cut, so there has to be a way to, my gosh, even if it's through volunteerism, to increase staffing, to have them. We've worked with local cities to increase public health services as well when it comes to prenatal care, when it comes to testing. So I shake a bit with the policies that are being passed down. I know their executive orders are being made every day. But when it comes to public health, Latinos, I spent years organizing different clinics in San Ana, in Anaheim, in areas that were underserved. There are doctors and dentists willing to donate their time for care. So again, it has to be at a grassroots level if we're going to have funding cut. So that's...
Most probably, we're going to have cuts in different programs, because if Trump decides to cut money, then we probably want to have to be more creative. And one of the things that we can do is, especially in the Health Department, we can involve students from PCC and also students from the Union Heights, so they can do some of the work that probably, they're not going to be able to, the services that we are not going to be able to have. One of the things that I would like to do is to have the Health Department involved in prevention programs. Don't wait until things happen in Pasadena, until we have a shooting, until the police is there, because it's not more police that we need. We need more services, especially more social services. One of the reasons why the Europeans don't have all the violence that we have is because they follow the people. They go to their homes. When they know somebody has a problem, they go and they see what they need, and they take care of the problem before that person, you know, do what you don't want them to do. So I think that every time, it's not about money. It's about being creative and about caring for the community.
Next to violence and housing and jobs, and I would put health at the very top of the list of most of those things, because if people aren't healthy, they can't work. If people aren't healthy, they can't focus. They can't, and kids aren't healthy, they can't learn. And so health is the, probably the top issue and most important issue. Our individual health and our collective health as a community. And that's why it's important to recall that, you know, these programs that were doctors volunteer and dentists don't just happen in Anaheim. They've been happening here in Pasadena for about 30 years, through Young and Healthy. We have that program in Pasadena. Young and Healthy provides that, and we should build on that and support Young and Healthy. The other thing to keep in mind is Pasadena is very unique. We are one of three cities in the entire state of California that has its own Health Department. And we should build on that. You know, we, I am very concerned about the impacts of the Affordable Care Act that may come, the changes that may come. And we should begin the work, and we have. We should, and we have begun the work of ensuring that those who are most vulnerable continue to have access for health, to health care through our own Health Department. The clinic services that I talked about earlier were going to go away. And that was the first sign that we were going to have to move quickly. And we moved those services to a nonprofit who now provides those services to families in Pasadena.
Okay, Ms. Morales, we'll start us off on this one. Comparing park use to park budget. Villa Park has the greatest number of visits in the city at approximately 300,000 a year with $2.3 million annual budget. Victory and Robinson Parks have about 134,000 visitors a year with a $1.9 million budget. Do you see a discrepancy in the numbers served and the budget allotted? And do you know if the Human Services and Recreation? Do the numbers again? We're talking about three different parks. Villa Park being the most visited, 300,000 people a year. The budget for Villa Park, $2.3 million. Two other parks, Victory and Robinson, they get much fewer visitors, 134,000 a year, with an annual budget of $1.9 million. So the question is, do you see the discrepancy in the numbers served and the budget that is allotted? And do you know if the Human Services and Recreation Director has recommended reinstating the staff positions eliminated four years ago? Ms. Morales.
You say Villa Park received $2.3?
$2.3 budget for 300,000 visitors, and the other two is $1.9 million budget for 134,000 visitors.
Well, I will have to see what services they're providing and how they're using the money. I know that the park that they have across the street, they're going to have new facilities. So I really will have to see, you know, to see if, if, why they're getting more money. Because there may be that they have more needs, but I don't know. I will have to see. Because I don't just want to say right now, "I don't know." Or maybe Victor can tell us, you know, what services, why are they having all that money? And what services are they providing?
Mr. Gordo.
I'm happy to tell you. So there is a discrepancy. But let's keep in mind the services that are provided. You know, we recently, District 5 led the charge to return some budget dollars to Villa Park and ensure that 300 seniors had a full-time staff person at Villa Park, because they'd been cut in the budget. And then it was not contemplated for in the budget. And I was the only person at City Council of the people sitting up here advocating for the return of those services. And successfully convinced, thank you to my colleague Andy Wilson and my other colleagues, that services at the park are important, and we need to continue that. But let's also keep in mind that a lot of those visitors at Villa Park aren't there just for city-provided services. So you've got to keep in mind what's also happening at Villa Park. There are other services at Villa Park, such as the WIC program. So it's not just a numbers game. It's easy to say there's $2.3 and X number of visitors. But if you don't understand the type of services that are being provided and who's providing the services, those numbers can be very misleading. Having said that, I intend to continue to advocate for more programs. I had the, I pressed a few years ago to have the soccer field renovated and have a stadium, a stadium-esque facility there with bleacher seating, and we achieved that, and I'll continue to do that.
I think Villa Park, in many ways, is the heart of our district, and it should be receiving the funds that it's receiving. However, on paper, I look at the numbers, I see how they look. On paper, some of the programs aren't as engaging or as meeting the demand. For example, the seniors programs, the early education programs, they're very much lacking. So again, it's not just simply a numbers game. There has to be a commitment to making the programs work for the residents that are within the district. So I hope to do that. I hope to use the community as a resource to do that.
We'll let you begin this next one. Pasadena is a city rich in its architecture, arts, culture, and diversity of heritage. We see evidence of black and white heritage and history throughout the city. We do not see the same for Latinos. To date, there are only two items that recognize the Latino community. So what can you do, or what have you set in place, so that this is remedied?
There's a lot we can do. My goodness. Again, our community is the biggest resource. There are people running businesses out of their own homes. There are people that are artists. There is a way to, you know, as a councilperson, at the very minimum, having weekly meetings within the Latino-run businesses to promote them, encouraging people that are working on art to move into the businesses, encouraging people, incentivizing people to move their businesses into the empty storefront after empty storefront on Orange Grove Boulevard, on Washington Boulevard, on Lake. There's a way to promote Latino business in the city as a whole to attract other parts of the city into our district. When it comes to art, so many people are designing things within their own, like you said, within their own homes. And we can promote that artwork, use art, you know, use art, use culture as a rallying point for our community within District Five and also throughout the city. There should be edifices to our culture. Most of the residents that work in Colorado Boulevard live in District Five. There should be dissemination of Latino culture throughout the city.
I believe that art feeds the soul and makes for more gentle people. And I really would like to see more arts in the city, especially in the youth. When you see all this graffiti, all you see is the expression of the art that these people have, of their talent. But it needs to be developed. And so we need more programs in the community as far as art is concerned. As far as services in the city, it brings to mind the El Centro de Acción Social, that the city didn't want to help economically. That was the only organization that we have that really represented the community. And it doesn't exist anymore. So we need people that is going to support the community in every single way, you know? Educationally, because they had a lot of educational programs that helped students who were back in their classes. And it helped them to have better grades, to get scholarships. We don't have that anymore. So instead of going ahead, we are going back. So I really would like to see somebody who would like to focus more. It's true that we don't represent just the Hispanic community, but we need to have better representation.
You know, I don't buy into the view that we don't celebrate our Latino culture. I certainly do. And if you go to Villa Park, if you go to even La Pintoresca, if you go to different parts of the city, you'll see that celebrations going on every single day. You know, the Or Clorico group at Villa Park, the youth at Villa Park, celebrate their culture every day. Now, if the question is, why don't... What do we put in place? You know, I recall, what is it now, Roberta? 17 years of the Latino History Parade? Approximately, no, more than that. Eight? 18 years. And I remember when Roberta came to me at Friends Indeed and said, I have an idea for a parade. And Roberta and I sat at Friends Indeed and talked about her idea of this Latino History Parade. And I told her that I would take that message back. I wasn't a council member at the time, but I would take that message back to City Hall and make it happen. And it was 18 years ago that I had a small hand in establishing that parade and helping Roberta put something in place that celebrates our culture every year.
Next question, and Mr. Gordo, you can start on this one. There's been an uptick in the violence occurring in our city, primarily in areas in northwest Pasadena. Community members are rightfully fearful. So what do you think should be done to lessen the violence and reassure those community members?
I think that programs for kids, mentoring, all of the things that were mentioned earlier are important. But, you know, it's not kindergartners that are out there shooting guns. And so we need to also focus on policing. You know, and it's not just a numbers game when it comes to the Police Department. You know, we used to have 279 police officers in Pasadena. We're down to 239 budgeted positions. When we cut some of those positions, the police chief could not cut from patrol. He couldn't cut from detectives. He had to cut some of the special enforcement section. We had 23 special enforcement section officers. Today, we have approximately nine. Those are the officers that track the really, really bad guys. And I think it's unacceptable to have nine special enforcement section officers when we should have 23. And so while we can't do it overnight because police officers are expensive, we should have a goal to give the police chief incrementally, as we can afford it, more of the tools that he needs to keep us safe. And the police chief has said to me that the tools he needs, it's approximately 11 more special enforcement police officers. And so I'm prepared to be supportive of that, again, in a manner that's responsible and in a manner, and when we can afford it.
As far as the city budget is, how we distribute that money is very important. I believe that there is other services that are necessary that are probably being cut because we are going giving all this money to the police. If the police cannot work with the money they have right now, something is wrong. They get paid very well, and they should be able to do their job. If we have all these problems in the city, I think that one of the things that they should do is preventive work, not just waiting for things to happen. The same at the city. Why are they waiting for the shootings to happen? They have to work on prevention. So I wouldn't give them any more money.
I feel like this call for more police is very out of touch with the community. I wonder if it has anything to do with the fact that the police union is your biggest funder for your campaign. The reality is that we have as many police as our community needs compared to other communities such as Pomona, other cities that have similar demographics, similar issues that we have. Again, we have to think of this long term. This isn't a matter of just, there's bad guys out there, we have to go after them. These bad guys belong to families within our district who are not willing to call law enforcement on their own blood. And so it's a matter of making sure the people within our district are safe through other means by organizing ourselves, by... My gosh, it's jobs! People wouldn't be doing drugs if they had access to jobs. They wouldn't be doing drugs if they weren't living in poverty, if they weren't living in multi-generational homes because people 30, 40, 50 years old can't move out of their own homes. Because we have, we're dealing with an economy where we're all living paycheck to paycheck, and we need housing. We need jobs. We need to fill the empty storefronts. We need to fill the slew of activities that have just gone missing over the years. This is what's going to make a difference. I refuse to think it's just going to be more law enforcement, especially given that so many members of our community, they're scared of me! They think I'm a social worker when I'm walking because they're undocumented. Because they're... And then once I explain who I am, they feel at ease, but they're not going to open the door to a police officer.
Last question, you have up to 90 seconds to answer this. And we'll let... Who wants to start this last one? Mr. Gordo? If elected, will you commit to serving the full term?
I absolutely... And by the way, my constituents are not afraid of me as I'm walking. The... I'm absolutely committed to serving out my full term, and I intend to fill out my full term. You know, I've been asked previously, why did I not run for Board of Supervisors or Assembly or something else? You know, I love this city. I love the people in this city. I love the fact that when I walk around and people come out of their house, I don't even have to walk up and knock on their door. They come out and talk to me. As I'm walking down the street, people drive by and wave at me. I care very, very deeply about the people of Pasadena, the people in my neighborhood, and the people in District Five. I've had tremendous success shutting down liquor stores and replacing it with affordable housing, improving neighborhoods, improving our parks, delivering affordable housing. And I intend to continue to do that because this is my community. This is where I grew up. This is where I went to elementary school. This is where I delivered the Pasadena Star News as a paper boy. And I absolutely intend to serve out this term.
I say yes, I will. And I just would like to... It's a question I have. Why the police... Every time somebody has a heart attack, the police shows up. Why are we wasting all the resources? If we need more policemen, why are we wasting? Obviously, because they don't have anything to do. They show up every time, you know? Like the fire department shows up? All right, all right. As far as the Latino parade, I was in the first force of directors, and I never saw Victor. And I really... I have a long history, you know, of being involved in the community. I've been in many organizations, many old volunteer work, and never was paid for it. And I really would like to bring all this experience to the city council. And so I'm asking for your vote.
I absolutely intend to serve the full term. I wouldn't be running otherwise. I have three little kids. I have a lot of urgency in making sure that, like many of our neighbors, that they're not shot or hit by a car. So at the very minimum, I want them to survive. I want them to thrive within our own neighborhood, within our city. So I intend to serve the term and also to promote other Latinos or other young people who want to serve in the public sphere. That is your role as a councilperson, to promote others, to help them achieve the kind of success that you've achieved.
You and I each have one minute for any final thoughts. You can go ahead.
Final thoughts? I mean, the reality is that I went to church this morning. I listened to the readings. Many of the readings focused on the fact that, you know, I am not sitting up here as this wise person, all-knowing person. What I am is this, I'm sitting up here with the willingness to sit with every one of you, to meet with every one of you because I think that our residents are a huge resource, and you are the ones that are going to help. Like Roberta mentioned with the Latino Heritage Parade, it takes a community effort, many years in the making, in order to get things done in this city. I am not taking credit for anything. It's you, and I want to make sure that you have a place at the table when I'm on the council.
I would like to see a city where everybody thrives, where people have the services they need, which they don't right now, especially the Hispanic community. There is a lot of... I know a lot of people that don't have money to go see the doctor, and they haven't gone because they can't. So I would like to pay more attention to the health services. Also, the youth, I'm always concerned with the youth because I think they're our future. And especially because our youth is low income, and they need a lot of services. And they need a lot of stimulation and good programs to help them get ahead. So, right, my time is up. But I'm asking for your vote again.
So, you know, it's... We shouldn't confuse achievement and accomplishment with taking credit. And it's certainly not my achievement or my accomplishments that I'm proud of. It's our community's achievements and accomplishments. Because when we shut down the liquor store at Raymond and Orange Grove, it was the community who came to me and said, we've got to do something about this. And we did. When we shut down the liquor store and replaced it with affordable housing at El Molino and Washington, it was my neighbors, my constituents, the community who came to me and said, we need to shut it down. It's a problem. And we did. When we created affordable housing at Hudson Oaks, it was the community who came to me and said, this is a burned-out apartment building in our neighborhood. We need to do something about it. And we did. And so those are just some examples of where I've been working with the community to make these improvements. And it's this community's achievements that I'm proud of. And it's this community's success that I'm proud to be a part of.
Once again, your candidates running for District Five, Victor Gordo, Aida Morales, and Crystal Lopez Padle. Thank you so much for being here this afternoon.